Okay, the meeting of the Ohio City, special meeting of the Ohio City Council is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Here.
Mayor, Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, and let's hope this is the last meeting we have where we violate the social distancing process.
Or the four feet.
Yeah, yeah, six feet is the best information we're getting. Okay, unless there's a, is there any objection to the agenda as submitted?
No.
Okay.
That's what I'm not.
Okay, discussion item number one, resolution confirming the existence of local emergency.
Yeah, we're a real time update here.
Yeah, there's been a real major effort between the city manager and my office to stay in contact with everybody in the county, in particular, the Dr. Levin, who is one of our own here in the valley, but who is the chief of the public health division of the county. And everybody was attempting to coordinate this with the governor and the president. The president at noon today has finally decided to declare an emergency.
I think it just happened.
Yeah, it did, it, yeah, right. It was on the tube when I left the house. The city manager had the authority to declare the emergency, which he has done, but to be confirmed by the city council, so that is the reason for the special meeting to get This is a time for a sense of urgency, not panic, particularly in our area, and so we want to take measured steps and stay in touch with those who know what they're talking about to the degree they know what they're talking about. And the bad news is, is that we still do not have adequate testing going on throughout the country for a number of reasons that we won't go into. The hospital does have the ability to test, but unfortunately, the time it takes to test and to diagnose means there's going to be a lag period, so all of us have to do our part in flattening what they call the curve by social distancing and washing hands and the things everybody knows about. James, do you want to add to that?
Exactly, exactly what you said, and just so that residents are aware, we have been having regularly, regular, originally daily meetings, but they've become multiple times a day meetings with the county public health officer, the county CEO, the other city managers in the county, and we've all been preparing to take steps as needed. And as everybody's aware, yesterday, the county declared a public health emergency, and all the cities are now going to be taking this action, so it's not unique to Ojai, it's every city in the county is expected to do this.
And as your office receives the best information, the latest information from the health officer, you post that on the city website?
We post it on the city website, and the county health officer continues to ask us to keep directing people to VC emergency, which we have here up on our screen. VC emergency, they just posted a bunch of materials, frequently asked questions for residents, they have guides for if you work in the food industry, what you can do to be safe, for schools, what you can do to be safe, and senior facilities, so, so there's a lot of resources there, we're going to keep pumping that information out as well. And as far as the disaster, I'm sorry, the emergency declaration, the emergency declaration, one of the intentions is to allow us to take action quickly without having to wait for a formal council meeting.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure there's questions. James, I already know the answer to this, but I want to make it clear, so I'm going to ask you, so you can say it officially as soon as, as soon as whoever's calling, Bill will stop calling. We are not declaring emergency because any of the conditions in the city of Ojai have changed, there haven't been anyone diagnosed up here, there haven't been any changes here, we're simply following in line with what the rest of the county is doing, and this is a preventive measure, not a reactionary measure to anything that's happened, correct?
Exactly, 100%, and you know, the, there's, the county declared because they had the third presumptive test, and that's three out of the 1 million residents, so it's, there's no immediate, you know, concern, it's to be extra cautious and for all the agencies to be able to work together and pool resources.
Okay.
Should we, are we going to pass the resolution first and then talk about agenda item number two? Is that how we're going to do this?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval of the resolution confirming.
Okay, move in second, is there any discussion on the resolution that's been issued? I don't know if we have to.
Can I just glance?
There's nothing really new in it, but it is, the idea is to have a consistent message. We were reluctant to get too far out in front because the concern about having panic, but on the other hand, if anybody's been involved in these kinds of things before, there's always the element that said, well, why aren't you warning us, everybody else is being warned, so that's a kind of a delicate balance that all of the cities and all of the counties in California have all been trying to follow. Not everybody has followed it, there, it's like a land rush, there are always a sooner or two that want to rush out and say, you know, we're, you know, I don't know, they're just a sooner or they're panicking. Right now, we have not had the community infection that we, that's been documented, I don't even know if there's even a suspicion, and the big problem is, is that we do not have the, you know, general test, testing of the population.
Don't have the testing, so we don't know.
So nobody will know that answer right now, so, Randy?
Well, again, I'm glad you touched on those things, I think the most important thing that we need to say as a council is that we are preparing, we are communicating, and we are collaborating. And as long as we state those three things, the community needs to know that we're acting on their behalf in everything that we do, whether it's through the police department, the fire department, the hospital, anything and everything that affects this community, I believe James is, is speaking to or will speak to. If we've approved this, I just had one question that I'd like to throw out there to the city manager, is do you feel that you have the sufficient amount of funds to take care of any emergency that you see coming forward at this moment? So what I'm saying is, I don't want to bind his hands that if he has an expenditure of greater than $25,000, that we got to do a special session. At this point, do we need to authorize something greater?
I can answer the question, he does have the authority to do what needs to be done, but this is a pandemic, which means it's not recognizing state or national borders, state borders, city borders, and so we don't have enough money, so we can't solve everything, so it all gets down to what is defined as an emergency, and the emergency council, James and I are meeting constantly to try to calculate what that might be. And so in answer to your question, is he has the authority, but that will not preclude us having a call to all of you, and the Brown Act has been modified, I guess temporarily, that will allow us to hold the meetings as long as we have a spot, which I told James, as long as I'm okay and he's okay, we will be here, and then wherever you folks are, we'll put you on a conference call if there, if need be some kind of council action. So that should cover.
So like I said, that's, that to me was my only concern, is the limitations that he might have, if this emergency act supersedes that, I'm 100%.
And this does, it does, it allows.
So, ready to vote to approve this?
Okay.
And I didn't mention, I have Matt Summers, Matt Summers on the phone.
Hey, Matt.
Hi, everybody. Mayor Council, just to add to Randy's point and James's response, on Municipal Code, Section 3106, we, for, with the emergency declaration and the council's ratification, James, as Director of Emergency Services, has sufficient power to requisition necessary materials and services to protect the city regardless of the standard $25,000 purchase limit.
Yep, and I just want to stress, it's, so we are prepared to act if needed, but there's nothing anticipated at this time.
Okay, can we have a roll call, I guess everybody would like to be on the record?
Mayor Johnston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Yes.
Okay, James, response to public health emergency.
Yeah, and thank you, I wanted to use the opportunity to, to give a couple of updates and let residents and council know what's going on. We actually, we've been coordinating very quickly, but we actually do have a couple of people who've called in that can give updates about specific things, we're expecting to have a call from the hospital, but we also have a call from Tiffany Morse, the superintendent for the school district, so that she has an opportunity to give an update to the public as well, so if I may, I think I'll start with that.
Okay, you want to put the mic down a little lower to be sure that it's, everything picks up?
Yeah.
James, pin the mic straight down at the.
Tiffany, are you still on?
Yeah, there you go, the tip will.
Oops, hi Tiffany, you still on?
Yes, this is Tiffany.
Thanks Tiffany, sorry, I realized I muted you instead of vice versa, so, I just, just did an introduction and, and noted that you wanted to take the opportunity to give an update and see if there are any questions.
And you are, we are live streaming Tiffany.
Great, so we have announced that we are closed through next week, we are on a week-by-week basis, so we'll be evaluating every day next week to see if there are further closures warranted by working with the Ventura County Office of Education and the Ventura County Public Health Department. We are setting up student care teams so that families will have an opportunity to come to any school campus and have, pick up a lunch, a breakfast, a device, and have access to mental health crisis counseling services. We'll have information going out to families later this afternoon with regards to details on that.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Tiffany, are you posting this on your website, and is there any of this information you could send us so that we can post it also?
Sure, yeah, we're working out the details now, we'll be sending out the message to families, it'll be on all of our social media, our website, and I'll make sure that James has a copy of that.
Thank you.
We are also canceling the musical through the weekend, we're attempting to see if we would be able to livestream a performance, but we will have no shows with a live audience.
Okay, other questions for the city manager before I open it up to any comment?
I'll have a brief update too. Okay, I think, so was that everything for the superintendent?
Are there, are there some issues with, that have arisen with respect to childcare, especially for families of first responders, healthcare for professionals, things like that?
Um, we are not able to provide childcare services, and we are not able to provide distance learning at this time, per guidance from the California Department of Education, Ventura County Office of Education and Legal Counsel, so we're working with families to see what they need on an individual basis, and if we, if there are community support mechanisms that we can connect them to, but we cannot provide childcare services.
The city perhaps has a role to play there in terms of coordinating with identified needs, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Mayor, one last question, Tiffany?
I'd like to make one comment before we start volunteering too much, the city of Ojai again is 4.34 square miles, the need of this is much greater, the county of Ventura represents most of the valley and has those kinds of resources, we should do our part, but we are not in a position, plus, one of the things that we hear from the health officer is the, the conflicting goals, one is to try to keep everything going in a reasonable way, which includes what do you do with your children if you're a first responder, but at the same time, there is this whole issue of crowd or community transmission, so putting a bunch of people together, particularly children, without all of the proper safeties, which we're unaware exactly what that entails, is probably one of the reasons almost everybody's hands are tied right at the moment.
I just wanted to bring up just, again, and I, and I respect that thought, and you're right, this, the school district is larger than, than the city of Ojai. Tiffany, is regarding feeding, I, for lack of a better term, I got meals on wheels, but I know that the school provides a lunch program and a breakfast program for certain children, are you going to be able to sustain that for the next week and moving forward?
Yeah, so that's the information that'll be coming out as soon as we have all of the details specified, that we will have student care teams at each site and possibly mobile student care teams, those student care teams will provide breakfast, lunch, device checkout, so computers, possibly wifi hotspots until we run out, and mental health crisis counseling for students who are, who are having trouble processing this, and books as well. So those student care teams and information about how to access those will be coming out this afternoon.
Thank you Tiffany, appreciate what the school district's doing.
Thank you.
Okay, are you ready for any public, do I have any cards from the public? I don't see any, okay. James, do you need any more authority or direction from the council?
You have another call in?
We're having a technical issue, so I'll, I'll see if we can get them back on, but no other authority or anything, but we did want to just make a, report a couple of, of things out, so one is that Chief Reverend and I have been in contact and wanted to just note, obviously, the police department is prepared, has taken precautions to, to deal with any medical issue that they may, may run into, and they are responding to calls for service as they typically would, so for people with questions about public safety. One thing that's come out is obviously several, most people have heard that the governor has noted that events of over 250 people should be, should be canceled, so we're working with event organizers in the city to try to work with them and see about rescheduling as needed.
And those numbers to a considerable degree are just arbitrary, there's no scientific basis for them, it's just the message is, is let's stay away as best we can, not only from strangers in the community, but even at home. This idea of quarantine, self-quarantine, or whatever they're calling it, without a test, you may just be taking it home and giving it to all your relatives, so people need to understand that, that's an individual responsibility, but, Ryan?
What, I'm sorry.
Can we get an update on the tennis tournament? What's the current status going on with the?
So the current status is, we, we have been in communication with them, obviously, NCAA canceled a lot of events, so, yeah, so they are having a board meeting on Tuesday to determine whether they are going to cancel.
And have we, have we issued a policy, have we informed them what our desires are as a city?
Well, so, we haven't yet because we were letting them tell us if they were going to cancel in the next couple of days, but we are preparing a policy if need be.
Okay, well, I don't know what we're going to vote on or not, but I mean, I want to, I want to make it very public, and I've done a lot of research into this, we also had a presentation through VCOG yesterday from the county, and there's a couple just facts I just want to point out. One, Ventura County sits in an isolated state compared to Los Angeles and Santa Barbara because there's no major airport and there's no major port, that's a benefit, but it is not a, you know, a firewall to anything bad happening. Ojai sits inside of Ventura County in a somewhat isolated area, so we're in a low-risk zone, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't do everything that we can to prepare and to be worried about it. My major concern with the tennis tournament is that the data and the science we're seeing is that individuals under 25 carry a high risk for having no symptoms and can carry it without being aware of it, and then individuals over the age of 60 are at the highest risk to have serious medical problems. Our city happens to have the highest percentage of over 60-year-old residents, and we don't have very many under 25-year-old residents, however, the tennis tournament would significantly change those demographics due to the influx of college-age tennis players. So the mix of 25-year-olds who may not know they have it with 60-year-olds who are at a high risk, although I think we could probably manage it if we had to as a city, it seems to me that it would increase the risk so significantly for our city versus where we are right now, that it wouldn't make a lot of sense, so I'm hopeful that that goes that way, but of course, we'll have an announcement when it's finally done, but I've had a lot of questions.
Also, the majority of our volunteers are over 60.
Okay, and Bill, I think has a bit to add to that on the specific 12.
Well, I was actually going to ask him about testing.
Oh, okay.
And actually, that's relevant because part of the problem with a tennis tournament is not having testing, it's a whole different world if you can test people, you know, before, as participants, and we don't, that's part of the problem, and so I'm going to segue into that, okay? What's popping up all over the country to address the lag in testing is this drive-through concept. Has there been any discussion about that, either with the sheriff's department, public health, et cetera, in terms of, it seems to be the local response to the testing lag is to think about the drive-through testing model, that seems to be one response local governments can make, do we have any update on that?
Yeah, so the update is, we've raised the issue with Dr. Levin.
Real quick, why don't you explain so everybody knows what the drive-through testing model is?
Well, it is just, it's, it's a quick-response testing because the current testing takes several days, basically.
Right, it eliminates the waiting room contamination and contagion, yeah, right.
And it eliminates the central collection, yes.
So we raised the issue at the last conference call with Dr. Levin, and we, we provided some information and asked if there was any county position on it, they had said that they would look into it, but that was the last conference call, we don't have an update from that.
Mayor, in the same, in the same, I, unless.
Yeah, Suzie, you have, I thought I heard.
I, yeah, I've been wanting to say something.
Okay, now is your time.
Unless it's a response that I don't, you know.
I can wait.
Okay. What is the level of communication with both individual healthcare workers and the gables and acacias, all the different nursing homes? And then the other thing that I never see in any of the national or local preventative measures, there's never a word about building, this is the time to really build your health, and I just want to, you know, I think our, many of our citizens are health-oriented, but this is a time, sometimes they talk about, you know, stocking up on food, and when you look at the food list, if they don't die of the virus, they're going to get scurvy, I swear to God, you know.
It's a much slower death, though.
What?
I said it's a much slower death, scurvy.
Yes, we're so fortunate, this is pixie tangerine season, and if there's not tourists coming in to buy them, this is a great snack for your kids to help build their immunity.
Yeah.
Buy more oranges.
Pixies, okay.
I'm glad that Suzie brought it up because I feel the same way about the greater need of senior citizens in our community to be identified, and then when we start looking at the homes that we have, and we're talking about some form of drive-through service, we might be thinking about how can we take a service to some of these facilities to actually accommodate them, so they don't have to be transported, we should transport anything to them.
What we can do to support that, yes.
Maybe we need to call the directors of each.
Hold on, if anybody tests positive at one of these facilities, they should not be there, and we should not be going there to test them, they should be removed from that facility immediately.
So what I'm trying to say is.
I think the response, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
And I don't disagree with that, what I'm trying to say is, we should be in contact with the directors of these facilities and find out what they're doing and what they're prepared to do.
What we can do to help.
Yes.
Yes.
And to reiterate, well, just, I just want to say, everything that we're doing is precautionary and preparation for a problem that we're concerned about, this is not reactionary to a problem that we currently have within the borders of the city. So that's why when you hear us talking about this, this is all getting set up for the possibilities of what could happen, not what we are doing.
And on that note, if I can add, I just, an hour ago was on the phone with the hospital administrator, and he was saying exactly that, which is, they are getting prepared, they, they feel pretty good about how prepared they are, they're getting, you know, ready for, for what needs to happen, we had a call with Steve Frank from Lifeline, who also said people can contact them if they have any questions, they are prepared for if anything were to happen, but everybody at this point just keeps reiterating, you know, there's no reason to panic, stay, stay calm. And so, we have talked to them, Hadi was going to have somebody on the call to speak about testing, but they got tied up in another call, so he is going to send some information to us that we'll post on the website tonight, and some frequently asked questions. And the question about level of communication, so we reached out, maybe, was it, I think it was like last Tuesday or Wednesday, to all the senior centers that we were aware of and a couple of other facilities, to offer masks and see if they needed anything else. So we've been in contact with them, we actually did deliver masks to some of the senior centers, just because as noted, they are the most susceptible, so we're trying to be careful with that, and we'll keep in communication with them.
And those facilities are professionally staffed, one of the things we can do to help is not to do to them what we're doing to the hospital, which is trying to get information, they're getting so many, everybody's getting so many calls that it is kind of, you know, dissipating some of what resource and energy we have, so it's important to communicate, but there's such a thing as over-communicating unless there's a need to, to talk.
Yeah, we have two speaker cards.
Okay, I have two speaker cards, Trevor, come on down, and Bob, you're on deck. Sorry, Bob, I didn't see yours first.
Hey, guys, you can probably see I'm live streaming this, and all I.
Of course you are.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to do, I'm getting questions from the community, and they wanted to know if there's any, if their questions are going to be addressed, which caused me to submit a speaker card. I think one of the questions is, is there going to be an online definition of this emergency? Is there going to be some type of definition from the city council as to what this emergency is, is that going to be posted online somewhere?
Yeah, so the resolution will be posted, and the resolution will have the full declaration.
Where and when?
It'll be posted today on our, on our homepage.
Okay, the second question I saw that came in was, are there going to be resources for people who are of lesser means, like helping with utilities, they can't work, they have to pay for childcare, et cetera? Is that going to be available from the city in any fashion?
Yeah, I would say, I guess in response to that, I'd say, keep in mind, 10 minutes before this meeting, President Trump declared a, an emergency, so a lot of this is going to be developing over the next couple.
And also, some state governors, just as we speak, are declaring, you know, holidays on things like utility collection, meeting certain, like if you have to get your license renewed, they're going to extend those kind of things, so some of that, well, hopefully, we're going to see coming out of the governor's office, you know, we'll see.
I think the question was more, though, is it going to be made available from the city, as opposed to?
I'll answer that for you, Trevor, and then, most of the people live outside the city like you do, in the Upper Ojai and in minors' Oaks, the county is the one to ask that question, we obviously are going to do what we can do, but that is not necessarily a question for the Ojai City Council.
And we may not have the authority, we don't have the authority to do, for example, what the governor can do, on that matter.
Okay, I hope that addresses her question.
I'd just add, I hope the people asking that are aware that we do have help of Ojai, and there are services in the city already in place to help you pay your utility bills, your rent, and no one need go hungry, there is quite a substantial food bank, I believe, on Fox Street.
And that is a much more area-wide service, which is an ongoing program that the city supports.
And we're in communication with other agencies, like this morning, there was an EDC/VC conference call for small businesses, so a lot of the county agencies are also coordinating these meetings and calls for people that are affected.
Someone said that they had reached out and spoke with the Ojai Valley Hospital Administration, is there going to be anything public made from them or the city council in relation to testing, where can you get it, when can you get it, are N95 masks available, et cetera?
As the information's available, we will be sure that that gets out to the public.
Yeah.
I'm expecting information.
And Trevor, unfortunately, we, we had a plan, we had a call planned with the hospital directly, but they're unavailable at this moment, otherwise we would be getting that answered.
We'll be using our Facebook posts and our website posts.
Great. Mr. Haney mentioned another thing that is near and dear to my heart, there are thousands of kids who are on the, you said meals to wheels, I don't know the specific program.
They have a food service.
I know exactly where.
Yep.
I was meeting with school board officials this morning and leaders, and one of the things that we were talking about is how do you best service that and continue to offer that program to kids and families in particular, because I think the school board can only offer it to children. And then, and I was listening to Mr. Johnston speak about, you know, we're balancing two separate interests here, that is, social distancing with also simultaneously serving the community, so I'm wondering if the city council could come up and collaboratively start thinking and talking about how do we best do that? Because one of the things that I'm thinking about is these families who rely on that program, who now are having to watch their children at home, and not only are the, you know, they're going to have to feed the kids, but also the families, what's the best vehicle to do that? Is it like making Sarzati Park available for some type of drive-through breakfast pickup? Well, what are the implications of an affected volunteer preparing a lunch and then transmitting that to someone who picks it up or vice versa?
These are very complicated issues that are being addressed, being watched, and as things unfold, and the issue, like your first question was, what is the definition of an emergency? The definition of emergency is going to become more intense as this goes along, hopefully it will not, but if we do not flatten the curve, the burden on all of us will be addressing and answering the kind of questions you're bringing up.
Sure, let's not get ahead of ourselves, right? There's no food shortage currently, and there's no prohibition to go into the store and buying your own food, so let's, let's not, you know, I, I don't want people to think that ideas that we may have for things that may come down the road, which is we're responsible to think about that are currently there, there's currently not a proposal to be running around providing meals to anybody because there's no need for it at this moment.
Well, of course there is, because there's families that rely on that.
The school, the school district food program, as, as the superintendent just said, they're continuing to run, but that's the school program, we don't have, unfortunately, don't have anything to do with that.
Okay, we have another card here, and we have, you can submit your question. Okay, the, we have another card here, and we have, you can submit your questions to the city manager separately.
One more germane comment, and that is that the very fact of a declaration of emergency allows a scope of discretion and action by the city manager without prior need for council deliberation. And as he very much, we have confidence in, in our city manager, a lot of confidence in our city manager, to make those judgments and act accordingly as the needs arise.
And I'll get out of your hair, real quickly, because I sense that coming from the mayor.
You're very sensitive, yes.
I know these things from being a trial lawyer. Will the city's resources be available for things like the Meals on Wheels program or whatever it is? Because one of the things we talked about is, okay, let's, let's do this on Monday, but can we do it at Sarzati Park? And how do we, who do we communicate that request to? Would it be the city manager?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Mayor, I have one, I just have one more thought. Also, as this, and Trevor, as this evolves, for instance, Bill and I met with the city manager a couple of days ago, and we've already asked for another session. So as, as these things keep popping up and questions like that, the council has to come together and talk about what we're prepared to do and how fast we can act on it. So it's going to be evolving, and we're going to be moving forward. And again, we're going to be communicating, collaborating, and letting the community know that we're with them 100%.
Cool, thank you.
And we're going to move as fast as we can.
And the Board of Supervisors meets on Tuesdays, and it would be a good idea to ask similar questions that you're asking to them. Bob, you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Yes, thank you, Trevor.
One thing I've become aware of, driving out really early in the morning, five, cruising around town. We have quite a few makeshift, mobile residential dwelling areas. We have a much larger homeless population than I was aware of. And I'm not sure what we're going to do, but if you take a look at the most vulnerable people, it's going to be them. And one of the things we certainly don't want to have happen is people that are outside in the cold, wet, no food, no medical, not seeing doctors, for a lot of reasons. Not that it's not available, just a lot of it's personal choice. I would certainly hope that we would find some way, whether it's through county social services, doing something to at least monitor. We do not want a population of, of roaming people.
Yeah, vectors.
That are sick and, and need help, that have an aversion for asking formally for help. So I would help, some way we can go ahead. It's pretty easy to see where everybody is, 5:30 in the morning, drive down Ojai, and look at some of them. I think we have to outreach, make, make a special, we're probably less than 50 people in population, but I really think that you, you folks need to make a special effort for them. So, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe something as simple as someone can go out, I think it has to be written on some kind of laminated thing that we are in an emergency, how urgent it is to wash your hands, and perhaps we can be more diligent about keeping the bathrooms open and clean. It just seems that's so fundamental that that would be money well spent, if made sure that, you know, that, you know, however, whatever we can do to help them keep their hands clean, that's, you know, something as simple as that, that's the first thought that pops into my mind.
Okay, we are, yeah, Ryan?
I just want to say that, thank, thank you, Bob, for your comments. I know part of our integration with the county plan on how to handle and deal with these issues, the, the homeless population is definitely one of the key components of how the county and how we're looking at it to make sure that we have coverage overall, especially into the high-risk areas and people who are more susceptible to, to having serious illness out of this. I know it's part of, I've heard it on everybody's radar, and we're definitely integrating that into everything.
Okay, did you have?
I have one other question for me. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I watched the exchange between the, the elected official, you know, she's high up, with the head of the National Health, whatever his title is, and she ended up convincing him to offer free testing and services. Am I correct?
She was the Congresswoman.
The Congresswoman. Yes, my mind just went blank.
They're trying to back away from that right now. That's, yeah, Katie Porter from Orange County.
Katie Porter, yeah, yeah. That was a fascinating exchange.
But those are the kinds of things that need to be addressed, things that, you know, that we're doing what we can at this level, but it, the, the real power comes from the top down. It's the economy that's getting hammered, but it's not really a financial crisis. It's just, it's, you know, the consequence on the financial sector.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And which apparently the stock market just surged again on the $50 billion promise the president made, but.
Thousand points.
Yeah. But wait till Monday, then, yeah, the, okay. The biggest thing they could do is release test kits.
Millions.
Be able, yeah, millions, yeah. So, you know, the virus is the enemy. Trying to fight an enemy that you can't identify where they are is the real crisis.
These numbers might have changed, but the other day it was, you know, our community is 750,000, our county.
That's more than that, it's almost a million.
Yeah, we've tested 77, so you can do the math on that. And out of the 77, we've had four confirmed. And the, the reality is, we're not testing enough, so we don't even know what, what these numbers are. So we can't forecast, we can't, we can't do anything to help communicate.
Yeah.
Or to lessen.
To manage, you must measure.
Right.
Yeah, yesterday's numbers, taking this to a national level, were something like 11,000 tests. And yet in South Korea, they have the capacity and are processing like 15,000 a day.
Right, right.
You know, that's what's got to change. Otherwise, the best we can do is tell people, maintain social distance, wash your hands, you know, don't touch your face, you know the list. And, you know, try not to move around anymore than you have to. So that's unfortunate, but that is where we are. Okay, James, is there anything else on the agenda besides what we just talked about? Because this meeting, we ought to bring to a close if.
Let him get back to work.
Yeah.
Do we need any, do we need a vote?
We're adjourned. Thank you.